Okay, six o'clock, we'll get going. Start with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, then roll call.
There it is.
Here.
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 Public meeting participation rules. One, please wait for the chair to acknowledge you before you speak. Two, begin by stating your name and address. Three, give us your comments, opinions, or questions on an issue being discussed. Four, to ensure that everybody has time to speak and that we can address other items on the agenda. We limit, may limit the individual speaking time to five minutes. If time permits, we may allow you one additional time period to provide new information. Five, please be respectful of the planning commission, applicant, and your neighbors. Thank you for attending. Tom Hilbert, Chair. Okay, adoption of agenda.
Support.
Dylan and Michelle, all in favor?
I am.
I opposed. Pro fewer minutes, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to pass the August twelfth minutes.
Michelle and. Dylan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That's proved. Okay, public comment. If anybody has any, uh, uh, thing, a public comment and that isn't in regards to the case, uh, oh, maybe you want to make it now or and if it's, if you want, even if it is in regards to case, you can make it now, but we'd rather do it when, when we open the hearing. And I don't see anybody on, uh, nobody on line, okay? So everybody's good, okay? Okay, correspondence, report oh four two four from R Duel. Make a motion to put that, file that.
Make a motion to receive and file all correspondence.
I'll support.
Dylan, Michelle, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, public hearing, case E oh four twenty-four. Derek Hueschner requests a special approval use to construct an accessory building prior to the principal dwelling. Property is located at seventy-six oh six North Point Shores Drive, parcel zero one four dash zero two nine dash zero 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 dash one five one dash zero zero and zero four one zero two nine zero 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 one five three dash zero zero in a waterfront residential zone.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, Derek, are you here? Okay, you want to anything to tell us?
Good evening. Uh, simply just want to get approval to build a pole barn this fall inside some art store, building materials and equipment and tools and whatnot next summer when I build my house.
When will you be building the house?
Um, I'm planning on breaking ground next spring, next summer.
So by the end of next summer, it'll be completed?
I would like to, yes. That's the plan, but I'm doing most of the work myself, so.
But you're definitely going to start on it next week?
Yep.
Nice spot there.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice spot.
Thank you.
This is nice.
Okay, and so, so, so far we have a, uh, building permit just for the whole barn.
It's for everything.
For everything.
It says that it's for the house.
Okay.
But you'll, it'll need to be renewed by the time you probably break ground.
Yeah, yeah, probably.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess, um, going through Mr. Duel's, uh, do you have any, you have anything else for us, Derek, or?
Not really, I guess the only other guy is, uh, I do have a septic already installed, so.
I got, and I did notice that, and obviously approved by
Yeah.
health permit, okay.
Yeah, that's that's it for me.
Okay, any, and, uh, any questions from the floor? Anybody have any questions? Joe, do you?
I just have a comment and.
Okay, come on up, yes.
Joel paid, uh, seven sixty-five for make sure it's wrote, and I'd like to ask that you approve his proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And going over Mr. Duel's, uh, report. We, the only thing he, uh, he phoned in there was that there was not a building permit, but no, there is a building permit, so uh, he has no, uh, he phoned no issues with the, uh, and obviously if he's got a septic in already, he's been in contact with the great authorities and that's on a private road, so. Yeah, so it's not, um, uh, public, uh, county would not need to approve that. Anything else? I'll ask Mr. Hueschner.
I just have a question about the motion, I guess, more than anything. So motion one. What's the difference between motion one and motion two? I mean, besides they all had the conditions, right? Oh, no, I
Two is
I had it printed on the same, sorry.
Yes.
I make a motion, close the public hearing.
Support.
Michelle, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other discussion from the board members or the audience? Okay. We have, we can approve. Uh, we have options to prove that is approved with, uh, exceptions or deny. Those are, are three options we have with this permit and.
I will make a motion to approve the special land use for the construction of an accessory building at seventy-six oh six North Point Shores Drive and the stated parcel numbers, um, given that the condition of the building permit has been met.
It has been met, Kevin said, so.
Yeah, we have, we have.
I support.
We need to finally have a friendly amendment that, that the, that the building of the house be completed or in motion by middle of next year. So we know a house is going to be built there, we know we have a permit. So this doesn't drag on, I'm sure it won't, but you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
My concern is the dates, the expiring and the, you know, it's like adding those conditions. I didn't know if we could do that.
Um, yes, we can. I was told we can.
Great.
But I would like to make that as a friendly amendment.
I'll accept that amendment to my motion.
So, Doris, if you just reiterate what you said, like.
I would like to see the house in the building, building phase uh, started next year and moving forward to get it completed, so.
How close do we start it?
Yeah, started.
Started in a timely fashion.
Yeah, and completed in a timely fashion, yes.
And the building permit will already have to be extended, we already realized that.
Right.
Kevin, I'm sure Kevin's talked to Mr. Hueschner about that soon. Okay.
Okay, so me, both of the private show, but that was supported by the number of the to grant the, um, such a certification. Such accessory building prior to the principal dwelling, or be an amendment to that, that post could be started next year and completed in a timely fashion. Um, Tom?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Doris?
Yes.
John?
Yep.
Ina Shaw?
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, we do not have anything to sign, right?
Yep. We'll understand. Application. He has to have that.
Oh. Yeah, Derek, you can, you get the copy of that, um, of the application there. And, uh, the whole thing, and you'll be sent, you'll be sent the minutes. Yes, okay, so, but, so you're good.
Yeah.
It's a beautiful, uh, beautiful sight. I, uh, I did drive out there and took a look, very nice, very nice.
I see you across the bay. I'm on Partridge Point, so.
Oh.
I'll watch, I'll watch and make sure you're building.
Just for knowing.
Yeah, keep.
Yep.
And if you were here for the case, if you don't want to sit around for the next discussion, you are more than welcome to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, sure, uh, gentlemen, are you, uh, just okay, okay, good.
Great.
Okay. Nico is from Nebkog, he is the, his information, a lot of information about that, there's some information about that and.
So that way.
I can stand for a bit and sit all day. Um, so hopefully I have a little bit of information for you. Um, I just got this this afternoon. Obviously, there was other staff that were going to come and one of them was rushed into emergency surgery the other day, so.
Oh goodness.
We're kind of a little short staffed.
Just to get out of this, uh.
Yeah.
We're not that bad.
Wrong Monday.
Like for emergency surgery, we had a couple resign recently for other positions, so. We're back to just a couple of us here. So I'm playing backup, and I just was handed this this afternoon, said, here, you're gonna have to go to this.
Okay, you are.
Yeah, um, so I guess I was told you were gonna go through some proposed language for short-term rentals. Okay. You know, proximity zoning ordinance, you can be as restrictive or open as you want. You don't have to regulate them at all, and you can just say people can do whatever they want. You can place licensing regulations, you know, or just sort of like notification or registry, they just, you know, people are gonna notify you that they have an Airbnb or something that to, just so you kind of know. And does everyone have a copy of those?
Well.
These that Denise sent?
Yes, yeah.
If not, I have a surplus copies there.
But I do.
Everybody have a copy?
I don't have it.
No.
No.
You said we have a copy of it.
When did she send this?
Oh, no, we, uh, went over this a few meetings ago, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Meetings.
Perfect.
Yeah.
But we, you know, we, we were kind of, we're still kind of in a information fact-finding.
He's got one.
Yeah, I think it's that one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I'm good.
Because we talked about, um, we had talked about some of the, uh, the the state has some, uh, legislative things possibly going on too, or?
Um, I know they do. Analysis.
Okay.
I only have the one copy of it, and I did not read it, so I just got it this afternoon, and I was thinking, other things, so, uh, as far as what's exactly going on at the state level, I would have to defer to Denise on that get back to you, like any more information.
Well, and this is already, this is already old, I don't know, you know, what's been.
Um, so the language here was all samples. She kind of compiled three or four different arguments she had to give you an example to go through. Um, you know, we can walk down through that and you can add to it, edit, you can cross stuff out if you just simply don't want to worry about those regulations. You'll see a note on the top, your township attorney has recommended that you keep that short-term rental ordinance as a separate ordinance. So in your actual zoning ordinance, you would just refer to it.
As opposed to?
As, what? As opposed to having all of these regulations right in your zoning ordinance? Um, he's recommending that you just refer to the short-term rental ordinance.
Okay.
In your actual zoning ordinance. Ma- maintain that as a standalone document.
Okay, a separate short-term rental ordinance, okay.
So, you know, anywhere, most of this, I would become part of that short-term rental ordinance and in your actual zoning ordinance, this is gonna refer back to this new document. This would be replaced, you know, she's got some notes throughout here, it would be replaced with a license or the short-term rental ordinance.
Is this currently in place in other municipalities, this language?
Short-term rentals, um, I'm sure it is. I couldn't give you a list of them. Denise could probably name a whole bunch off the top of her head.
I think she said that on Press Gill editor, something like that.
I know Press Gill's been working on it. I know the city of Alpena.
The city was working on it as well, I hear that.
Through it, um.
Well, I know that.
Been working with like Village of Hillman and Hillman Township, one or the other, and they're talking about it, um.
I know that our news is here is coming from Traverse City, uh, I either listened, heard, or read uh, in Traverse City, they have a uh, Airbnb, yes, and it's a five hundred dollar fine. If you violate it, well, what people are doing is they're violating, paying the five hundred dollar fine and they're, to just continue on.
Continuing on.
So that it, that's not, you know, so that's what they're, that's, that's what they're finding out there. So I'm, I'm just, just something, you know, because we're, I don't think anybody on, necessarily on the, uh, board here is, uh, has you know, bought into this, or some have, some have not, other some of this, and, you know.
Well, we were, Nathan was gonna get together with the sheriff's office.
Correct.
And talk to them, but, I mean, the biggest thing is enforcement.
Yes.
We can write anything we want, but who's gonna enforce that?
That's my concern.
See, we.
How much trouble do we actually have with it? I mean, how many times did the sheriff or the law enforcement have to go and enforce these?
Yeah.
In LP? I don't know.
Well, there isn't, there's no ordinance of any sort, so I guess that it may be, instead of enforcing an ordinance, how many issues are you having at short-term rentals?
Yeah, well.
Maybe the question would ask.
Enforcement is gonna do anything.
Yeah.
The big problem is trespassing, noise, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
I, I would assume.
Some of the times where they have more issues with it are some of the real popular lakes in the waterfront communities, Torch Lake, Oaten Lake, Higgins Lake, things like that, they have some issues, or a lot of the cabins have just become Airbnb and they're just, they become party spots.
Well, I think they have a lot, you know, even without Airbnbs, they have a lot of issues on those big lakes, but.
They, they have some of those anyways, this has just exacerbated it.
Right.
Becoming a bigger problem, so a lot of communities try to set up an ordinance like this to regulate it somewhat.
I think we have a lot of fact-finding to do on that, yeah.
I'm writing out a list of questions that I have that I.
And I had some questions written down as well.
As far as the document I just gave you, she's, basically, you're, we're welcome to walk right through that and add more regulations, cross out regulations that you just don't feel you need to have in there, or.
Well, who would police this?
Hmm?
Who would take care of this if there was a company?
It would really, you know, direct enforcement would fall back on law enforcement, obviously, but also, you know, zoning administrator to look at what's going on out there, um, you know, and send notice to property owners. It depends on the issue going on, but they're.
Let's see, like the city of Alpena has their own police department.
Yeah.
So they have we have our, we have a sheriff's department that we depend on for our law, but you know, if they're and they're talking about reducing their number of officers.
Yeah, so it's, you know, it's gonna depend on the, the issue going on. If it's as simple as you're saying, you know, two Airbnbs can't be next to each other, that's gonna fall on the township and the zoning administrator. Why are these two people both doing Airbnb, and how do you change that? You know, if it comes down to noise complaints and partying and, you know, people blocking roads or something because they got twenty people packed in a little cabin, that's gonna fall towards law enforcement, so.
I think that's our, that's our number, our top of mind concern is if, quote unquote, we allow it, who's gonna take care of the complaints from the neighbors who live there? But again, kind of goes back to the marijuana thing, that's not our job. Our job is to make sure the ordinance is easily understandable, readable, and um, followed, but again, then that becomes a township issue of who's gonna police up the ordinances that are being followed. Like Tom said, it's worth it for the guys over in Traverse City to pay a five hundred dollar fine and just collect fifteen hundred dollars a weekend. You know, they don't care, but what, what's their township doing, I guess, more than anything?
Well, this is the city of Traverse City, and I don't know about.
Yeah, but what's their, what's their municipality doing to, are we just getting a five hundred dollar, are they just getting a five hundred dollar check every month from these property owners because they're getting fined constantly, or you know, I think we still have to do a lot of fact-finding about
Yeah.
understanding that our ordinance is written to to stick and make sense, but we're not writing the law.
Right. So if, I mean, if you have not read through this all, it's gonna, would take you some time to go through this in detail. You know, that would be my recommendation, as everyone reads through this, mark it up. Just little things, if you think about the, the second one there, number two, time period. That's just defining the time period of what defines it as short-term rental versus a regular rental, or
Right.
that someone just happened to move out. What is it? They're in there for thirty days or less, is it, you know, four days or less, seven days or less, how are you gonna define that?
How do we prove it? Is it a lease situation, is it a contract that we need to have submitted to us to make sure they're following the rules?
So how often are they doing it? You know, is it rented out every weekend, or five or six days out of the week, or is it two weekends per year? So those are the things you're gonna want to go walk through and define what fits your township and what you want. She kind of tried to pick out some some of the best ones she's seen, and this is kind of a compilation of multiple different ordinances regarding short-term rentals. And kind of based it a little of everything in, so you have something for reference to read through and start with.
We need to think about this and also worry about it.
Yeah.
Why, I mean, is it that big a deal that we need it?
That's what I was wondering, is it a big issue, which we would have to find out from our law enforcement? How often do they go there, or?
Yeah.
Well, I think she asked the neighbors.
Or the neighbors, yeah.
It's a big deal to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
I also.
No, no.
No, you're here for inflation, yeah.
Right.
These people that are renting, they own the house next to me, are two hundred fifty, three hundred miles from here. Okay. Every week, there's two, three different people that are in that house. It's not just one, one group on a week. But very, I've lived there for twenty years, I've never had an issue with my dogs or anything. Some of the people over there call the dogs over there, then the next couple comes up and wants a dog around. It's, it's getting to be a real pain in the ass. I mean, I don't want to be giving a dog a proof, but that's where it is. And to top it off, I know where the people are there, they're all looking for houses in this town. A lot of them have got good jobs, guys, a couple of people have been transferred up here somewhere from B and R Town, they can't even find a place to live. They love to live there. I mean, I, I understand you can't tell the people that can't have their house, but all I'm trying to say is that we need homes to sell in this town, not the people that constantly run a mall. Now, I don't know what the number is, somebody told me the number of the township looks like in the high forties. You could, you'd know better than that than I do. But I mean, that many houses that are, that are Airbnb, and.
See, I, I don't know, because I don't really have, I don't know that we have a way to know.
We don't.
We don't, because we don't have an ordinance.
We don't have a way to know, because we don't have any restrictions on this, right?
Yeah.
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 No, I, I understand, because I.
Yeah, not trying to apply this anyway, so I just, I just think there needs to be something done.
You don't, you don't have a direct. You don't have a direct way to know, you know, you haven't, you don't have an ordinance, you don't have a license mechanism that's tracking.
Right.
Tracking our, but
is it gonna be perfect? No, but you could kind of start clearing like law enforcement, zoning administrator. Have somebody sit down and do a search of Airbnb and VRBO and some of those sites and just looking at how many places pop up for rent.
You're trying to get her.
You know. That's how they, that's how those sites operate, so they're gonna pop up, you know, start doing the search, is it twenty or forty, or is it two hundred?
Just think of that particular neighbor that has, was next to your house. So we react to that.
Yeah.
Well, it's a possibility, I think, we have, we gotta work on coming together with something that has maybe not quite the teeth in it yet, but we have some document to work from that they have, they don't have any teeth, they can't do anything. So if we, we provide them a set of teeth, maybe they can go out and bite some. Not your dog. Yeah. Not your dog.
It's just the idea. Somebody doesn't like the dog, but the people who were there before that are pulling all over there.
Sure.
Party, but.
Also, things you can write.
I get it, I get it.
And I'm gonna be perfectly honest, I haven't had any problem with people. So I mean, I'm not here to say that these people that are running the house are bad, because I haven't had any issue. My issues are lights left on, I think, the whole back of the house is lit up. And then even, you know, I my whole backyard blew up like I might, like I live next to Kmart because of the way they have all these lights on the back of your house.
Yeah.
And I went over and asked them, please turn the lights off, and, uh, some people are very popular, other people aren't.
There's forty-nine.
I don't want, they're not coming in here to play any speed, or not, they have made speed, or they're about to close them door.
Okay.
So, so I know things like.
Circumstantial, but that's why we have to have some sort of it's like having a neighbor who is a jerk, but does really nice things for your dog, you know, it's just the same thing.
To the people that are running the house, that own the house, they're not jerks either.
Do you, do you hear from them at all, or do they?
I have their number, and if I have any issue, I call them, and there's been one time there was an issue, and she was on the phone, and the next morning, they had, had nothing to do with it, it was their neighbor, but, I mean, they're and like, you know, they tell them, if there's any problem whatsoever, call me, we'll take care of it, we'll be, so I got, again, I don't want to pick on people.
Okay.
I just don't like you know, we have a lot of stuff. You know, I got bars and garages, I, I don't like to have to lock everything up, and I don't, in there, every time I turn around, it's a different person. If it was like, if it was, they, they had to come every, at least be there for a week or something, it'd be a little different, but I mean, sometimes there's three people, four people there in one week. There was that one night, people are gone, or they're two to three places.
You never know why they're there, are they up here for recreation, tourism, you know, just partying? There's a lot of them that are using short-term rentals, like the, the workers for the solar, going in and rescue, a lot of them that are just using short-term rentals while they're up here.
Yeah.
You know.
Go ahead.
My, my question is, oh, okay, this is already started, I'll be, be back, back in the bottle, so much people bought this, uh, they make money, or, or make, make money, or maybe, maybe, or venture. So, I mean, how is it, how is it going to be handled? They're renting, they're renting, you know, the whole state for five hundred dollars a night. And now you're, I mean, and you tell them that they can't, they can't be doing that, and that, that is their own, I'm fine. I mean, we're, you know.
And I think some of that is where some of the state legislation is going, and they're talking about that, um, and, and that is a tough one, you know? What do you regulate and how? Um, you know, other communities are looking at is it somebody local that's just buying the house next to them, or the house down the road that they're renting out on the weekends to make some extra money, and they're there to take care of problems? There's a lot of them that it's out of state companies, developers that are buying up all these places, and they're just renting them out, and it's strictly for profit, and they don't care about the house, so. There's communities that are trying to regulate that it either has to be a local owner, or they have to have a local property manager to that, that is a point of contact.
I, I, what I think is, once they start doing this, we, we, where, where does the, where does the township stand in trying to?
Where does the, where does the township stand in trying to enforce it?
The ones that are already actively doing it, it would be a little tougher to start enforcing it, yes.
But you can, can you make it like ineffective? By like March of twenty twenty five, anyone who is. Currently Airbnb would have to start a new license or whatever it is that we. You'd have to have it, I mean, I'm looking at Kevin going, should we do inspections? Because the, I, I know you don't have the time or the energy to do that, but. You know, what's to say that they're even safe places for people to be renting, you know, and. From an Airbnb versus an actual rental policy, I mean, I, we've gotta do a lot of rental inspections every year. And we're renting long term, so can we? You know, enforce something like that and that, it might even scare people away from it, and you're right, sir. There's people looking for houses to buy and they're Airbnbing because they don't have any other options. Cuz they don't. Well, and it's, it's a good and a bad, right? Because we don't have a bunch of empty properties sitting for sale.
People that are buying empty property and putting a camper on it in Airbnb.
Oh, really? I haven't seen that. Well, I just saw Bo, um, Alpena Township, it's saying there's three hundred and fifty nine. But as I scroll through it, there's, it's Black River, I think it's just. Saying Alpena because it's close, I just did an Airbnb search.
They're everywhere.
There's always gonna be people that don't listen to the ordinance, to the rules and.
Correct, yeah, this is supposed in Lashine.
The main thing, the intent of your ordinance would be to kind of set up some sort of regulation of, you know. Various zoning districts, you know, is it allowed in every district?
That was my, I wrote, I started right.
Is it permitted in every district or is it special use in some, or is it not allowed in some districts? Those are things to think about, where do you want, where do you want it to happen at, or try and keep it from happening? You know, how many do you want, you know, do you wanna regulate the total number in the township? Is it so many per neighborhood area? How many rentals do you want on a single parcel of land based on acres, you know? You can allow somebody to come in and has five acres and put in twenty tiny houses on Airbnb, things like. Things to think about.
All of the municipality around. Well, I, I, I think uniform, you know, processes across municipalities is the ultimate goal, don't, you know. We're, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here, why would we do the work that somebody else started doing? But again, where's the township got the resources to enforce it, you know? We don't have an Airbnb champion, if you will, you know? So.
And there, and there's, you know, there's too many unknowns in terms of what that enforcement might entail to really say who has to do it. Fall back on. Some of the township, some law enforcement, some that's just simply gonna be the property owners.
Make you somebody a little bit in line. Other people might say, no, I'll get that five hundred bucks.
Reality of the people that's gonna keep in line are the ones that are more. Local people that are just honestly trying to make a few extra bucks, they have a second house that. You know, maybe they inherited. Yeah, the renters too.
Five hundred bucks and say, if you don't get any plates, we give five hundred dollars.
Five hundred bucks back, yeah.
They'll be respectful, yeah.
Keep some more honest ones in there.
If you're not, you know, if you're twenty-three years old and you came up with a grown problem.
Yeah.
They have five hundred extra dollars, they have themselves a real good time.
Yeah. It's like, it's probably, who, who are they being elected to and why are they coming? Well, again, it's.
Community in the state, I'm sure every community.
Now, it's vacationers, but for, as a majority, but as this gentleman alluded to. There's people who cannot find a place to live and they live and work here. So they're trying to do short term rental here, there and everywhere. I have a friend. Who's renting an Airbnb on a long term basis right now and. She literally has. No other place to find, she has, she has no other resources to buy a house right now. She's renting a place month to month, it's an Airbnb. But for her to buy a house.
That's another reason a lot of communities are looking at regulating. The overall number. Of short term rentals within a community, simply because they're saying, we need permanent housing for residents, we need permanent housing so we can. Bring more people here for jobs.
And another question, and, and Kevin, you might have the answer to this. What's to say, I mean, we have a bunch of rental properties, right? So what's to say if I have my rental inspection, I'm following the rules from my being a landlord? And I decide that, oh, this place is really nice, so I'm just gonna turn it into an Airbnb, but. Do you require from a, from a rental inspection standpoint, is it required to? Um, prove leases or anything like that? Cuz you're just checking for safety and. Yeah.
Paint holes in the wall.
Right.
They walk out two hours later, that guy's wrapped.
Correct, but that, that could also be, well, I'm doing my rental inspection every three years, I'm good to go, I'm gonna Airbnb this and rent it out for two, two weeks at a time. People, exactly, you know, it's gonna police it. You know, you're not, you just wanna make, I don't even know what the, my husband takes care of, I don't even know what the follow up is on the, there's mold in the bathroom, what's the follow up? I don't even know what that process is. Oh. But done checklist, it's not, it's not a monitoring situation.
Well, the tenant starts calling. City and says, hey.
This is a dump. Right.
Both both ways.
Yeah.
The rental program does pay for it.
No.
They have to take money out of their building, but they pay for it.
I, I think, you know, the point of maybe having your. Short term rental ordinance isn't. Yeah, you cannot be out there policing it every day, but. If you have that place that becomes a serious issue, you have some sort of regulations to fall back on and look at and say, all right. This does not meet the code, this would not have been approved. And if you can prove that it, they started operating it as an Airbnb or a vacation rental, a short term rental, after. The effect of it.
Or the effect of it.
You can shut it down, so it gives you that enforcement mechanism when it does become an issue. Can you afford to go out there every day and check every house in the township? No, but. At least it gives you something.
We don't even have a rental. Anything in the. Rental properties don't have to be inspected at all. Because that was, didn't they do, try to do that?
No, they did it in the city.
But they tried here.
They tried some.
And there was like a hundred people showed up at the meeting. I don't know, I don't. But the, it was some kind of a rental.
It was a rental, like, sales. Whole thing all rolled up into one day.
That was a few years ago, wasn't it?
Yes. Another guy selling stone road. He knew everything, and we thought he did. If I'm on fire.
Yep.
Or in the leases, we didn't need his services anymore. So that, you know, the direction you take is up to you, it's your township, you decide what's best for your township. My first recommendation is if you have not read through, you know, these examples in detail, I would. Take the time to read through all of this, take some notes about it.
Yeah.
Write down any questions, so that you can have another discussion, then go through this. During your meeting and mark it up. And we can come back to another meeting.
Some good discussion ourselves.
Edit it to your needs.
Come back when we all got more than one knowledge about it, and ask them people questions.
Yeah.
And throw them out here on the table.
And I'd be willing to, I can contact my brother-in-law's with the sheriff's department, he'd be more than happy to come and talk about. Complaints, he'd be able to provide us some data at least.
He'd be great.
He would be, he'd, he'd be honest with us too, cuz he's also a landlord, so he'd be able to have, do different perspectives from it.
Yeah.
That'd be appreciated.
Yeah. Oh, he could probably just do a noise complaint and he would know. Where, if it was an Airbnb or whatever. I can see what he can find out, what data we would need a FOIA for. I don't want, we don't need that kind of research. But I also think it's a good idea, and you know, correct me if I'm wrong, that we talk with. Our neighboring municipalities about what they're doing, because if we don't have uniform practices. Someone's gonna get the middle finger, right? So the city has really strong. You know, rules and against or for, and we're a little bit more lax, if we're not uniform in this. And I'm saying, city of Alpena. Presqueal. And maybe even like, I, I don't know if Long Rapids Township would have. Something on that, that I, on the Airbnb site that I just looked at, there was three of them in Lashine. Which, ew, why would you vacation?
The city of Alpena right now.
Yeah.
And I know. It kind of was just last week, I think, she had a day where she had a. Zoom meeting scheduled to specifically talk about short term rentals, and I think it was probably the. Fifth or sixth or eighth or tenth Zoom meeting she had talking about this issue, so. Yeah, you're not, you're not alone, you're wondering how to deal with this, you know, the city's going through it too. I know, I went to one meeting for Denise, she's the zoning expert, not me. I just kind of pinch hit once in a while when we're short staffed. But I went to Sanborn Township. And talked about. Short term rentals, uh.
Was it the evening?
Few issues.
Yeah, was it a night meeting that there was a bunch of us at?
Yeah.
Was it the intergovernmental?
No.
Okay, that's the one I was thinking of that you were at. That was the rec plan, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and I found out one of those, yes.
Yeah, I think we need to. Employ other ideas, sorry.
What is, what is there? Do you know what they have going on? Do they have kind of this? Sanborn Township.
Sanborn?
Cuz I mean, they're, they're Presqueal and Sanborn touch Alpena Township, so.
Right, I don't remember the exact regulations that they decided on the end, end. That was kind of the same thing. It was like two o'clock in the afternoon when it was handed to me and said, can you be at this meeting at six P M? So. It's kind of a last minute thing, but I remember walking through, talking about this, um. They basically went through and crossed a few things out and kind of accepted a lot of the regulations that should given them the samples. But I know they did change some things. I, I'm sure. Denise can send you whatever they did, and again, I, I don't even know if they're finished with it. I know they're not finished with City of Alpena. I know. We've been working with Presqueal on both zoning and. Master plan, so I can ask if they. Should give you a kind of a summary of what they're talking about, where they're going maybe. So you have a little more to consider as you go through this.
That would be good.
Again, I just think that all parties need to be at the same table.
Except.
It just makes sense, because I, if I'm an investor and I'm not here to help customers, because if you can make a buck. Like you said, John, we should all own three or four different businesses, right? So if you're, if, if, if it's. You know, if the horizon comes true of what we're thinking of, what's gonna happen with homes and. Property availability in the next eighteen months. There is going to be people who are going to choose to either buy an Alpena city. Or Alpena Township based on what the rules are, so we need to have. If, if not the same, then similar, and I like what you said about the different, the different zoning areas, you know? Waterfront, it's gonna be a different, you know, situation than just a. Where I live in a little neighborhood that. You know.
Can I, can I ask you a question about the neighboring property? Was, was the current owners that own it, were they, um, legacy owners? In other words, it was their mom and dad or grandma and grandpas?
No.
And they own it now? No, somebody bought it?
They bought it.
For, for the purpose of running it out.
Yes, it's a turn up, I didn't realize that when they bought, it wouldn't have made a difference anyway, but I mean. I found out when I was on vacation, what they were doing.
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah.
Well, I know Sue Skibby was at a meeting.
A year ago.
A year ago and was, had.
Fair point.
But it was, it was like, uh, uh. More of a, a. You know, like ten people came for a weekend and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're behind me on an angle, that's what's saved between that house. And one next to me. When they decide to party, and, and I guess, I, I don't wanna pick on them, because they're not really taught to be that big of an aggravation with it. But they're a lot, a lot over on. By Skibby's house.
Well, I know she had a complaint about it, you know, so.
They threw those lights out, the whole house, they got the whole house lit up at the back, I mean, it's not like you just put lights on all the, your gas or whatever. Put it all up high, it lights up everywhere.
Yeah, I, I know there are areas where they have.
The only way you can really do this. I don't, I don't want you to think that, I don't mean it. Record at you. But you look at it differently, if it was your house, if it was your neighbor, and you guys come up with that all the time.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand where you're, I never gave it off the world, it's all that happened.
Yeah, when it's, it's not in my backyard, so it's not my problem, yeah, that, yeah, that kind, yeah.
Mister, uh, Mister. The supervisor told me to talk to you guys, he said, you're the ones that can consult. Or. You're the ones that potentially are gonna be the ones to make decisions.
We make a recommendation and then we turn it over to the board, and the board is the one that makes, they approve or, or not, but. But we don't try, we usually don't try to, I mean, nerves are representative from the board and.
Yep.
We, we don't normally try to, uh, write something that we know they're not gonna.
Can I ask you, did you see that, uh, some of this stuff is really looked at by the state?
The state has some proposed bills and some legislation out there regarding short term rentals. You're welcome to take this one, at least just gave me this today. You know, as far as I'm aware, I haven't read it yet.
I've been on several calls.
You know, I think.
For my job, I'm a legislative representative, and I've been on several calls regarding the short term rentals. From a financial perspective, more so than anything, but. It's going to be, what, the legislation that, from what I'm understanding, is going to be super restrictive from a, how many units? Basically, a lot of this language is gonna be in there, but it's gonna be restrictive as to. Um, like, the police, it, it's again, it's the policing of it, and that's the big, that's the case even for the state. Cuz, again, every municipality can have an ordinance, but not every municipality has, has a law enforcement. Angle of it, and even if it is, even if they do. Where's law enforcement's time being best spent? Is it, you know, fighting crime? Um, or is it policing noise, you know, and yes, noise complaints are criminal, there's no doubt about it, but. It's coming out of the more metro Detroit, um, metro Detroit, Grand Rapids and Lansing areas is where it's coming from, so. Of course, the state's focus is gonna be on those larger, you know, more populated areas. Um, but it's also going to be stuck in lame duck, lame duck for. Quite a few months, especially may, possibly the remainder of this year. Um, it's an election year, I don't know if anyone's known, knows that or not, but. We've been living under a rock or not, but with it being an election year, it's, it's, it's literally just in discussion. Um, and whether it happens. I mean, the governor, governor can sign anything, it's, then it's the enforcement. It took us two years to get, you know, marijuana figured out, so this is gonna be. Ever, and, and, and everyone's gonna have an opinion like you, you two, right? Which is greatly appreciated. But then there's gonna be the guy that comes in and says, I own three Airbnbs and this is my income and this is what I do, and these are the rules I put in place and.
I know one thing.
He said, he said.
The state level is taxing it too.
Mm-hmm.
They're saying, where's the service tax on hotels? They're saying, where's the service tax on hotels? Bed and breakfast, stuff like that.
But who's gonna tax it? Is it the state? Is it the C V B? Is it the this?
Do that, but that's one thing they're looking at is. You got the hotels and stuff there trying to say, you need to even the field, you know, we have the charity tax, that's at our rates, so they can come in and undercut us. There's a lot to think about with it. You know, the main point of the ordinance is just so you have some sort of.
Yeah, I even know a handful of senior citizens that leave for the winter and Airbnb their house out. When they're in Florida, you know, and then.
Yeah.
But they're not the ones that are on the sites either, so then it's.
Yeah.
You know, how do we find them?
People do that. There's people that Airbnb a bedroom in their house.
Mm-hmm.
Still living there. There's a lot of different scenarios to consider. You know, like you said, I think the main thing that a lot of communities are trying to regulate is. Is get rid of the party houses.
It sounds like the lights are just tacky more than anything.
It's for when they're on the yard, they, and I don't know, again. Like, oh, I honestly, the lights aren't gonna be, but I don't bother with it when it comes to that, but when you're not home. Well, when you go to bed, they turn the lights.
Yeah.
I'm not sure you heard that same thing too.
I think the noise uh of the partying was more the number, number of people of the party uh at. You know, and then when. Not ever, not all, we wanna use the bathroom inside the building, they, they wanna use, you know.
I know during Cherry Festival in Traverse City, they have a lot of issues.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure they do, yeah.
They'll have thirty people packed in a two-bedroom house.
Oh, yeah.
There's your sleep in anywhere and everywhere, cause they're just there to party at the Cherry Festival and. The places are getting destroyed, and then it's. It's an out-of-state company that owns it.
Similar.
Uh, uh, the Cherry Festival and Dead Festival are good.
There's a better class of people at the Potato House.
Yeah.
I think we need to table this and get with Nathan or whoever it is to try and arrange some sort of. Conversation, maybe a workshop. So that we're not.
Yeah, yeah.
Having, meeting after meeting and saying, let's kick this can down the road.
There's a lot, there's a lot here. I don't, I don't know what we would even uh.
I don't even know where to begin with that.
Recommend taking the time on your own. Flight reading before bed.
Right.
Go through and mark it up, you know, look at the things that you think will really fit your township, how you might edit it to better fit.
And I've had this a long time.
Some of them might just not work for you. So definitely, try doing a little research on some of those websites, so, um, they're really in air. Helping the township.
Yeah. Good idea.
Talk to the zoning administrator or the assessor on vacant homes versus. You know, vacation homes for people that they could be Airbnb as well. Versus how many are permanent residences. That'll kind of give you some data to go behind it when you're considering these regulations.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Nico.
Thank you, Nico. Thanks for your input, gentlemen. We appreciate your perspective. Yeah, absolutely.
So we have a zoning administrator.
That was just an FYI.
And Nathan said, anybody that's interested in that, uh, reach out, let us know. That he probably was a good opportunity for you guys to support.
I took this. Yeah, I took it.
I don't know, or timeline?
Got a cure.
Oh. I could probably do that too.
My kid migrates.
It's an eighteen-hour, it says it's eighteen hours, but it doesn't say if it's in person or online or when it starts or it's on demand. Wish I had the time.
Get another job.
Yeah, sure, John. I have one of them right now.
Yeah.
You want one?
No.
Buy me a new one.
Get out of that.
Speaking of that also, uh, uh, does anybody know of anybody that might wanna be a, on this?
Zoning?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Planning.
Has Nathan? Made, made uh.
I'm not aware of anybody.
Has Cory resigned officially or?
I think he was gonna try to stick around until he found a replacement.
Okay. He wants to be. He really doesn't wanna do it anymore. Okay. Okay, that's fine. That's fine. I'm glad he. He is a busy man. He's got two, uh, wife and two little kids and, yeah. So do we wanna uh? Do, work on this at the next meeting or make that our workshop or? Again, or um?
I think we should do a workshop.
I think we were.
Or something separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because what's gonna happen is we, we won't have a case in October and then that gets kicked down the, the road a little bit.
Well, I mean, even if we don't.
Let's workshop it without a case. If there's not a case, is there anything pending?
Not yet.
Okay.
But there's still always the, the due dates. Another week or two.
Okay, perfect.
You won't be here?
I just thought about that too. I don't think I will be up there.
Be Airbnb your host while you're gone?
Yeah, I won't be here, so I, that wouldn't work for me, but. The next month's meeting, I won't be, I will be. I'll be available.
Airbnb it?
Oh, jeez.
Well, you live in Atlanta, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a, a new teacher that came in the school and it was great, fresh out of college.
Oh.
Um, she couldn't find a place, she had a little short notice, much higher than what schools started, so I would get a place, we'd give it to you three to six months.
Year and a half ago.
After, after a year, you're gonna start, you gotta get.
Yeah.
Well, you are generous.
Yeah, yeah.
Once she gets out, can I move in?
Twenty, twenty-two years old and never lived anywhere at all in fresh out of college.
Well, you are.
Yeah, so I say we workshop some dates, get some dates out there.
Dates, yeah, uh, yeah. It doesn't sound like we're gonna even have, uh.
Well, and October fourteenth is Columbus Day is.
And we're open.
You are open, okay.
So if we uh, Michelle and Dylan probably won't be here and maybe not Cory, so we're. Probably down to four, so we don't wanna.
How about I ask when?
Yeah.
When you're not going to be here, and then see what dates might be available outside that.
And then November gets into. Hunting season too, so.
But that's not a problem.
Too many people on the. Does it affect you?
Uh-huh.
Is, are you a hunter?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, why don't Dylan and I just get together? We'll just let you guys know. We're the ones doing all the motions. We'll get it done. We'll have it written. You guys just need to support it.
Somebody's got a rassle speaking.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
To be the chairman, you don't have to be the smartest guy in the room, but you have to know who is.
I understand that frame of business. We'll copy you on the email in the event she's out.
So for a little while here, she might be a little bit slower responding.
Usu- usually if it's just a question or two, she's right on it, but you know, if we're, if you're gonna ask her, we're gonna. Have her rewrite the whole thing, well then, maybe that.
If any of you decide you'd like us to come back, just let us know.
And then we will be changing uh administration too, so. When, uh, as of. November twentieth, so.
Cool. At noon? Oh, that, that part.
And, you know, but noon.
The new person might have a different.
Might have a different idea, yeah.
Yeah.
But I will ask her, she. Email you like a summary of what the city of Alpena is talking about.
Perfect. Yeah, Sanborn and Preskill and city, I mean, she doesn't have to.
Yeah.
We don't need the whole.
If she's got something rough. And we would like to. Yeah. Well, cause Preskill and Sanborn have the same law enforcement problem. Where the city of Alpena, they have. You know, they have their own place for, so they, they can spend as much or as little amount of time as they wanna, so.
They have rules about.
Okay, yes. Well, we had that, um, you know, cause somebody will buy a lot on a lake and. And use it as a weekend getaway and park camp, park campers on it, and. We have some kind of ordinance on that, but I don't. Think it's very enforceable. But we have, we have some.
And then, yeah, you know, that's something that you're not enforced every day. I'm here for a lot of it, it's just. Off the weekend, if the lake, take a last or something. Fifteen campers show up for the lot and they don't want to sort of, a camper on the ground.
Thank you, Nico.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm sure there's a lot of other people uh. Throughout the township that have similar uh feelings about. That you do. Well, I know some, and, but you said you live near uh Skibby, so that's.
What, what channel are you on? I was on three. I had a place on three.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks.
All in favor.
Thank you again, gentlemen. Appreciate it.